Good evening. I like to call this regular meeting of the Sholo City Council the order. By roll call, see that all council members are present with the exception of council member Kelly. That's a rare, that's a rare case, I think, twice in 27 years, but would like to excuse him this evening. Would thank those that are with us tonight in the audience as well as those may be watching on City 56. We'd like to begin this evening with an invocation. I'll offer that followed by the pledge of allegiance by Vice Mayor. Those who'd like to join with us, please stand. Our dear heavenly Father, we're grateful for the opportunity which we have to meet together this evening as officials of the city of Sholo and citizens representing the business of this community. We're grateful for situations that we find ourselves in, that we have help, we have strength, and that we have a community who cares and who serves one another. We're grateful for the opportunities that we have to help one another and for the safety that we've enjoyed this summer, free of fire dangers, although it's been one of our driest years. Ask for moisture and might be able to have some ease of the drought conditions in Arizona. We ask that thou might be with those who take part this night, that they might be able to present those things that they would like to in a manner that they would like to do so. We're grateful for the opportunity we have to come together to care and to do the city's business and be able to work with the citizens in our community. Grateful for the youth in our community and ask that thou bless them and help them in their trials and we ask thee to be with those who have cause to mourn or uncomfortable, that they might be able to be at peace and be able to find help. Heavenly Father, help us to reach out to those that need help in any way, that will be there and be able to slow our life down and find those people who are really in need of thy help. And we ask for thy blessings this evening and those who blessing upon our armed service people who are there, our first responders, as well as nurses and doctors who've gone through and sacrificed so much this time in their families. We ask thee to help us to remain well and be able to not have symptoms and the COVID any more severe in our community, Father. Be thy will that it will come to an end. We love thee and we give thee thanks for all that we do have. These things we ask, grateful in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
Pledge.
To the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item tonight we have is a call to the public, a citizen who would like to speak on any matter that's not on the agenda may do so at this time. You can address the council as a whole and know that your time is limited to three minutes. We've got Allison Hepner has asked to speak tonight. Allison, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon or good evening. I got dressed up for you guys today to come and talk to you about the Community Health Needs Assessment. I'm sure you're all familiar with that. I've talked about it three years ago in 2018. We started to do our first Community Health Needs Assessment. And then we're doing our update right now. And what that requires is we've completed a focus group regionally. We have our epidemiological data going on, and then we have our Community Health Needs Survey. And that's why I'm here today. This Community Health Needs has brought in over a million dollars in grants into our communities. It has addressed substance abuse, poverty, mental health, chronic disease, and sexually transmitted diseases, what the focus was. We have, one of the things that you have worked on is NACRIN. NACRIN came out of the Community Health Needs Assessment, our resource guide, our brochure. So this is a very valuable assessment, and I'm asking you here today, I've sent this stuff to Tamra, to not only take the survey, have your employees take the survey, and promote it to the community and the citizens of Sholo. In this survey, we'll be able to tell how many people in each city, town, has taken the survey. And you bet we're gonna be celebrating who gets it done the most, so just something to do. So please, again, take it. Tamra has the information and I'm gonna go and have my anniversary now. I will see you guys later. That's how important it was, though. We had to stop and tell you.
Is there a website or someplace to go to get that?
Tamra has all the information. I shared it to her. I shared a QR code. I shared a link that talks about it, and I shared just the straight survey. So we have three ways of doing that.
Thank you very much. Congratulations on your anniversary.
Thank you.
Going for chicken wings?
Yeah.
Anyone else? Call the public. See no one else moved. I'll close. Call the public and come back to our next item on the agenda, special events. A presentation from Timber Mesa Fire and Medical District regarding the bond. Just want to preface this here that we're here to give information tonight. We cannot take a side one place or the other, for or against, and at the same time, an understanding that Timber Mesa is their own district and not part of the city of Sholo, but we do have a working agreement. So Chief Savage, this time, we'll turn the time to you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much for having me this evening, and I appreciate your invocation there, especially the mention of our armed services personnel. I just had my youngest son graduate from Marine Corps boot camp last week, so I now have two sons.
Thank you for your sacrifice there.
For tonight, I'm here to give a presentation on Timber Mesa's bond initiative that's on the ballot, November 3rd of 2020. I, much like yourself, in my official capacity, can't advocate one way or another, or ask somebody to vote in a certain way. My purpose here is only to give you factual information about the bond and what it means. Little history of Timber Mesa, and I'll try to speed through this. Your time is precious and I don't want to waste that. But if you do have questions along the way, feel free to stop me, and if I don't answer all your questions by the end, I'll certainly stick around. History of Timber Mesa, we were formed in 2014 as the result of successful collaboration, the merger of the Lakeside, Linden, and Sholo Fire Departments. In 2018, the Director of the Department of Health Services awarded Timber Mesa an expanded CON or ambulance service area to provide ambulance services throughout the community, including Sholo and Linden, but also including White Mountain Lake, Pine Oak, Clay Spring, a portion of Vernon, and the surrounding communities. Also in 2018, the White Mountain Lake Fire District was consolidated to become a part of Timber Mesa. I'll get used to this here in just a second. Let me, there we go. What you have in front of you now is a map of the district. It really shows in the red and white hash the fire district as it existed prior to that consolidation with White Mountain Lake. And then in the blue and red hash, you have what was the White Mountain Lake Fire District, which is now part of Timber Mesa. This thing is touchy. We now service 216 square miles with an ambulance service area, or CON again, that covers 440 square miles. The district provides service to more than 34,500 full-time residents with a seasonal population that's estimated at 55,000. This next number is actually wrong, and I apologize for that. In 2019, Timber Mesa responded to more than 6,200 calls for service. I was estimating based on some prior year data and when I built this, and we've had new data since then. As I mentioned, the district is 216 square miles. That's represented in the red and blue hash area. The CON is 440 square miles. That's represented in the blue on this map. We currently have 93 full-time employees, 80 in the operations section, more commonly known as firefighters in the field, six in the administrative section, and seven in the logistics section. We operate out of five staff stations, the airport facility, and one administration and support services facility. And we have a training, excuse me, a training division in cooperation with Pintop Fire District. They actually have an employee of theirs that's assigned in our training. This is our organizational structure as it exists today. You can see again on the left side of that screen, the Deputy Chief of Operations and the entire operations section underneath that. That's where the vast majority of our employees are. And then to the right, beginning with the Fire Marshal, and then administrative services and logistics. That's where the remaining 13 employees exist. Since our creation, Timber Mesa has outperformed every financial projection and saved the taxpayers of the White Mountains more than $2 million a year. We've been recognized by the government, Governor, excuse me, Government Finance Officers Association for excellence in financial reporting for each of the last three years. We are financially stable and we're able to continue current operations into the foreseeable future. There is a lot of information on this chart, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have on it, but I really want to draw your attention to the bolded black box. You see the lower line there is the estimated tax rate. That was what was estimated by Emergency Services Consulting International and the James Vincent Group, what the district would need to operate for its first five years, and actually, the first year has fallen off of this chart. We keep adding years to the backend. For the first five years of operation, and you can see that each year we outperformed those projections. At those projections, it was estimated that we would save the $2 million, so by outperforming those projections, we've actually saved something more. Some of the accomplishments of Timber Mesa, again, in 2014, we merged. In 15, we applied for the expanded CON and purchased the administration and support services site over across from the Armory. In 2016, we were awarded premier provider status through the Arizona Department of Health Services. Also in 2016, we established the first ever meet and confer agreement with the White Mountain Firefighters Association Timber Mesa Chapter. In 2017, we amended the fire code to the 2015 international fire code, and that was done in cooperation with surrounding agencies. Also, we had the top of the woods designated as the first firewise community in the fire district. There's been several more since then. In 2017, we began the rebuilding process of Station 17. Station 17 is our Linden facility. Also in 2017, we adopted the first ever comprehensive annual financial report. So I mentioned two things relevant to our finances here in the last few minutes, and I know it's no secret to this group that some of our predecessor agencies had some challenges as it related to finances. Neither the comprehensive annual financial report or the Government Finance Officers Association recognition are things that are required of a fire district. They're very common among municipal governments and things like that. We've taken those extra steps to try to assure the public that their finances are being handled appropriately. In 2018, Station 17, again in Linden, was completed and dedicated to the service of the Linden community. Also in 2018, we were awarded the expanded CON for ambulance service. We put into service a scene support truck for firefighter safety and rehab, and we were awarded the first ever GFOA award for excellence in financial reporting. Finally, in 2018, we consolidated the White Mountain Lake Fire District into Timber Mesa. We were awarded our second GFOA award in 2019, and we adopted a lower tax rate than that which was projected in the White Mountain Lake consolidation. In 2019, we earned an ISO Class 3 rating, which puts us in the top 25% of fire districts or fire departments across the nation. And in 2019, we celebrated our five-year anniversary, having saved more than $10 million in our first five years of operation. In 2019, we began the phase in of what is a second set of turnouts. Turnouts are those clothes that firefighters wear when they go interior on a structure fire. Cancer has become the number one killer of firefighters. Line of duty deaths are caused by cancer more than any other cause today. It used to be cardiac events, but today it's cancer. A big part of that reason is that our modern building materials are basically solid fuel, right? They're all plastic. And when plastics burn, they put off all kinds of nasty stuff. That gets into the firefighter's turnouts and then later is absorbed into their skin, and that's how they're contracted cancer. The second set of turnouts allows the firefighters to do their job, come out and decontaminate themselves, clean their gear, and while it's being cleaned, continue to work in a fresh set of gear. In 2019, we trained not only our organization, but six surrounding organizations in blue card incident command procedures. So all of your local fire agencies are speaking the same language. They're on the same page as it relates to incident command. We completed our first ever engineer academy in 2020. We added a fifth rescue or ambulance at Station 14, and for those who don't know, Station 14 is our Fawnbrook facility across from JCPenney. In 2020, we applied for nine new firefighter positions, three per shift, through the Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Grant Program, or SAFRA program. I got a little ahead of myself on this next bullet point. I anticipated it would be further along than it is right now, but in 2020, we are working on the installation of Opticom, which is a traffic preemption system in cooperation with the city of Sholo and the Pintop Fire District. I'm gonna assume at this point, unless there are any questions on that, that that's been explained here as far as what that is.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
The nine new firefighters through the grant, did you receive that, or what's the status of that?
We have been notified that we've received it at this point.
That you did, I'm sorry.
We did, we did receive that. We just, just found that out here this last couple of weeks.
Chief, go ahead and explain the Opticom. We're aware of it, but maybe not the public.
If you've been in a larger municipality, you may have seen when a fire truck or an ambulance or a police vehicle is approaching an intersection, the intersection will start to flash, and the light will turn green in the direction of travel of the fire, the fire truck or the emergency vehicle. It allows for better safety for our responders. It allows for better safety for the public who is no longer in that intersection. That intersection's been cleared. In our case, it also allows for a more rapid response because we're not slowing down a 26,000 pound vehicle and then starting it back up and then slowing it down at the next traffic light and starting it back up. So it does provide for a faster response time as well.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Finally, in 2020, we had a unanimous recommendation from the Citizens Advisory Committee to pursue bond funding and a unanimous vote of the Fire Board to call for an election. Why a bond? As stated, Timber Mesa can continue to provide services at current levels as far out as we can see, but we have opportunities to improve our community and firefighter safety, our services, our response times, and our fleet of fire apparatus. While Timber Mesa can continue to perform at current levels, we cannot make the necessary improvements under the current statutory framework without bond. General obligation bonds, and again, I feel like I might be preaching to the choir a little bit here. I think a lot of you are familiar with what that is. They're financing tools used by government entities. They're essentially investor loans granted based on the full faith and credit of the fire district, or in this case, it's tax base. Geo-bonds are voter-approved and to be used for capital purchases only. They cannot be used for operating expenses, so there are no firefighters being hired as a result of this. There are no firefighters getting a raise as a result of this or anything else. It's strictly for vehicles and equipment or facilities. By using a bond to fund capital items, the line item budget is relieved of those same capital needs. And the example I have there is the debt service on lease purchase agreements and things of that nature. Timber Mesa's geo-bond in particular, again, in 2019, the Fire Board directed me to assemble a Citizens Advisory Committee and determine whether a bond was appropriate for the fire district. That committee agreed that the district should pursue a bond for the projects identified and for the amount indicated, but was concerned about competing ballot initiatives. So if you recall this time last year, actually, just prior to this time last year, there was a countywide jail district on the ballot, and I think, Mr. Rutter, you were on that committee, so if I misspeak, please correct me, but I think that was kind of the prevailing concern of the committee at that point. The 2019 committee made a recommendation to the Fire Board that they should not pursue a bond in 2019, but that they should pursue a bond election in 2020. In 2020, and let me back up a step, with that committee work that had been done the year prior, I felt like I had appropriate citizen authorization to move forward with a recommendation to my board. My board, suffice to say, disagreed with me and asked that I put together another committee for 2020 to review any changes and to see if that recommendation still stood. So in 2020, another Citizens Advisory Committee was formed, including businesspeople, political leaders, and citizens of the fire district. The 2020 bond committee unanimously voted to recommend to the Fire Board that Timber Mesa should call for an election for an $18.9 million bond. A phone survey of Timber Mesa residents conducted by an independent polling company revealed that we had 65% support for the bond initiative, and that was really before any information on the bond had gone out. In May of 2020, the Timber Mesa Fire Board unanimously voted to call for an election on November 3rd, 2020. I'm gonna go into each one of these items in greater detail here in just a second, but Timber Mesa's bond packages, excuse me, package includes retiring long-term lease purchase obligations, relocating Station 15, and that is the downtown Sholo facility here on Sixth Street, developing a training facility, remodeling Station 19, which is our White Mountain Lake Fire Station, purchasing fire engines and a ladder truck over the 10 years of the bond project. The bond is scheduled for two separate sales in order to keep the tax rate for repayment of the bond as low as possible, and that's estimated to average 33 cents per $100 of limited property value over the 20-year lifespan. Item number one, retiring long-term lease purchase obligations scheduled immediately in 2021 for $3.53 million. Annual debt service has the real effect of 14 cents on the district's primary tax rate. That's today's dollars, so I do say potentially reducing the fire district's tax rate from $299 to $285, and I say that very intentionally. I don't want to overpromise and underdeliver. But in today's dollars, that's what it means, and that's our intent with those funds. Statutorily, fire districts are limited to a tax rate of $3.25 per $100 of limited property value. At $299, the fire district only has 8% capacity to absorb future financial pressures. And I have several examples there of PSPRS or Public Safety Retirement, healthcare costs, workers' compensation, and so forth, that we really have no control over what those are going to be moving forward. To put that 8% capacity into perspective, in the downturn in the economy in 2010 up here, the predecessor agencies and what is now Timber Mesa lost a cumulative total of 38% of assessed value. Should something like that occur again, we don't have the capacity to absorb that, so just trying to help us understand what those numbers mean.
A quick question, if you can explain. So you're doing this bond, but you can raise it up to 3.25 cents per 100. Can you explain why you don't do that?
Two real reasons. One, you couldn't raise enough funds to do the projects that have been outlined here, first of all, and second of all, the 8% capacity to absorb the future unforeseen event is now 0% capacity, and that's not good business in fire district finance.
So that being said, if you went up to 3.25 and something happened, you're kind of stuck. Is that what you mean here?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on that? No. Item number two, relocating Station 15, scheduled for 2023. And again, Station 15 is our downtown Sholo station at 60 North Sixth Street. I can't say that three times fast. Originally, we planned that station for remodel. There are several issues there. It does not meet current standards in any way, shape, or form. And by that, I mean NFPA, but I also mean ADA, I mean OSHA, I mean some of those relevant standards that we have to build a facility to. We understood that, and we understood some other things about that station. That station has poor access in the area. To leave that station on an emergency call, you either have to go left and go down a steep grade into an uncontrolled intersection on the highway, and we do have at least one anecdotal story of a fire engine sliding across the highway there, but by the grace of God, nobody was hurt, right? If some of you may recall, it was a fire at Sonic, so they arrived on scene pretty quickly. Upon further review, we learned some other things about Station 15, though. Again, we knew that location was poor and the access was poor. If you don't go down that hill, you have to go through a school zone or out through a residential neighborhood in order to get out of that area and get to the calls. Then we looked at our call volume, and I'll show you that here in just a second. We're not located well relative to the call volume in that area either. We're just outside where the core of the call volume is. This map here shows that call volume on a heat map in downtown Sholo. You can see where Station 15 is there with the yellow star. That's the current location on Sixth Street. And then you can see the proposed location, which is roughly central in the Deuce Clubs, and that could be in several hundred yards in any direction there, but our desire is to be closer to the center of call volume and access the highway at a controlled intersection are the two things we're looking for there. We're estimated to save between 30 and 60 seconds on the average response time within the city of Sholo or in downtown Sholo by moving that station, and I've had people say, hey, 30 seconds, that's not much. But when you're having the cardiac event on the other end of the 911 call, it's a lifetime. Equally so, when we're talking about structure fires, I put up there exponential fire growth. Fires in modern construction double in size approximately every 30 seconds. So having a 60-second, in the best case scenario, or a 30-second head start on that does a lot for both firefighter and public safety. Any questions on Station 15? Item number three, developing a training facility, scheduled for 2024. Timber Mesa has a demand for more than 26,000 hours of training per year, which is an average of 270 hours per employee. And I say average because it is different, right? An EMT has different recertification requirements than does a paramedic, as an example. And we have no facility to accommodate these training needs. For recruitment purposes, Timber Mesa plans to begin an off-the-street academy to train new firefighters. An academy consists of approximately 400 hours of training with a full training cadre and 10 to 20 students, depending on the need at the time. For any of you who've sat through a Gordon Graham presentation and looked at his matrix of risk, we are a high-risk, low-frequency risk model, which is the most hazardous. The need for training is that it be frequent, consistent, and realistic in order to achieve positive outcomes. And those positive outcomes, again, are both public and firefighter safety. This illustration, and I stress illustration, I'm not an architect nor a draftsman, so bear with me. At the bottom of the screen would be Highway 60. This is our administrative and support services site, if you're familiar with it, across from the Armory. The two blue buildings are those that already exist on that site. So you have the administrative offices in the warehouse, and then across the parking lot or to the right of your screen is our fleet services facility. We are the only emergency vehicle technician fleet shop in the region. We actually not only work on our own vehicles, but we work on most of the fire departments around us as well. The orange buildings that are represented on that illustration are what's being proposed. So on that site, we have a training classrooms and offices building, top right of your screen, and then to the left of that, a training tower and live burn facility. About the middle of the screen, you see an apparatus bay for training engines and ladders to be housed in, and that also doubles as a dirty classroom place where if you have dirty type training going on that you don't want on a carpet in a nice room like this, you have a place to do it. And then the last building represented there, across the parking lot from the administration building, is fire prevention offices. And believe it or not, we are already built out in that administration and warehouse facility. Every office is currently taken up. With anticipated growth in the future, we will end up needing that office space as well. The next slide is just a breakdown of that training classroom and office building. Just to give you an idea, and again, I'm not an architect. I don't want, if you walk into the building and it looks a little bit different than this later, please forgive me. But our intent is one large classroom that can be divided up into four smaller classrooms. We are challenged for space all the time. I mentioned Gordon Graham a little bit ago. We had an effort about a year ago when Gordon Graham came to present, and we held it at the Snowflake Performing Arts Center. That worked in a lot of ways. There were about 150 to 180 participants in that. But I will also tell you that there were a lot of people that missed out on it because they couldn't travel there, right? Our on-duty firefighters, we can't send them all to that location and abandon the coverage of the district. So we'd like to be able to house those types of events more closely here and then our everyday training needs. Any questions on the training facility? Hearing none. Okay. Fourth item is remodeling Station 19. Station 19, again, is our White Mountain Lake facility, scheduled for 2026 at 1.42 million. Yes, sir.
Yes, I do want to ask a question about the training facility.
I'm happy to go back.
Only because I hear it a lot. So there's one in Taylor. Can you explain to our Snowflake area, can you explain to us why that facility doesn't work?
Absolutely. I actually visited with the NATC or Northeastern Arizona Training Committee earlier today on that very issue. Firefighter training, again, needs to be frequent, realistic, and we've got to be able to put, I'm trying to think of a good analogy here, so bear with. I mentioned this. I mentioned this at, at a, at a presentation just like this over in the Lakeside Community not too long ago, and I, I asked the question, I said, why does every high school up here have its own? Football field. Why don't we just bust the students from one school to the other and have them practice that way? And schedule around each other and schedule their games, and. That's heresy in the Blue Ridge area. I don't know if you're familiar with that or not, but, but short of being booed out of the room, they understood, right? And, and very much like a football team, uh, where, where, where you have the linemen that practice and you have the backs that practice, and at some point you bring them together and you put play together. Right? Firefighting isn't all that different from that, where, where we have single-engine company evolutions. But eventually we have to have, and we're required to have by, by ISO, we're required to have multi, multi-company training evolutions. Well, NATC is a great facility and, and we use it. Uh, we, we had crews out there this morning, in fact. Let me rephrase that. We had a crew out there this morning. That's all I can spare to send them thirty or forty minutes away. Uh, and still maintain coverage for nine-one-one response in the district. It, it does not work for us for our multi-company training, and it, it frankly doesn't work. They couldn't accommodate twenty-six thousand hours of training. Uh, they have other things going on there. They have NAVIT programs going on there. They have. Uh, firefighter one and two programs going on through the community college. They also have a police academy that goes on there. Scheduling around all of those things and still achieving our training hours simply can't happen. Um, but, but the two things are the availability of the, of the facility itself and the distance traveled. I, I, I cannot send multiple, multiple units out there and maintain good coverage in the district.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other questions on training?
Well, I'll just back up. You shared with us that you can continue operating like you are. Which means you still have to provide training that you are currently doing. So if you can continue, how are you meeting the twenty-six thousand hours of training now?
We, we struggle to meet those twenty-six thousand hours of training, and the other thing is, and I mentioned the training needs to be realistic. Uh, we have. And, and those of you who have been in the fire service understand this, right? You, you find that abandoned building, or you find that parking lot that you can put a cone in and squirt water at it and those kind of things, and that represents kind of the end of your evolution. That's not realistic training. That, that doesn't get the job done when you make entry into the front door. Right, we.
Explain then the difference between the facility that's in Taylor and the facility that you'd be proposing, what? What differences between the two centers?
Probably the, the best or, or most significant difference between the two is just the availability of usage data that. We can, I can, I can train crews every day, which is a need in our organization, right? Again. Somebody can do the math for me, but twenty-six thousand hours is, is training every day. And, and so we, we can't do that at, at the Taylor facility today. All right, the fourth item is remodeling Station nineteen again in White Mountain Lake, scheduled for twenty twenty-six. Uh, Station nineteen became a part of the fire district in two thousand and eighteen as part of consolidation. This facility, uh, those of you who may remember, that facility was originally an auto mechanics garage. It was never built as a fire station and certainly not built as a, a full-time fire station with, with full-time staff. As a result of being built as a mechanics garage and not a fire station, the, the bays are actually too small to fit most of our fire apparatus in. In fact, there are exactly two in our entire fleet that fit in that facility, and. Uh, Lord help us if one of those is out on a wild, wildland fire and the other one breaks down. That, that means that, that we're, we're putting equipment outdoors out there because we can't fit it in the bays. Station nineteen needs to be modified to increase the size of the bays, add living quarters for full-time firefighters, and make other improvements in port with relevant safety standards. Any questions on Station nineteen? And then finally, our apparatus replacement plan, scheduled for various years, two point one five million. Timber Mesa has successfully updated our frontline fleet of engines and ladders over the past few years. Our oldest first-out engine is a two thousand and thirteen, and NFPA affords a twenty-year lifespan to fire apparatus. Uh, that being said, we do have a reserve engine that is, is twenty years old as of January one, twenty twenty-one. And so that'll, that's the next one in the, in the vehicle replacement plan set to be, uh, jettisoned from the fleet and replaced. In addition, now, we, we still have a whole bunch of work to do to update all of our other apparatus, our brush trucks, our, our tenders and, and the like. If we're able to fund our large vehicles, our, our engine and ladder from the bond, that, those funds that we would otherwise, uh, dedicate to that will be freed up to address those needs. So that, that we can update our brush trucks and our tenders and, and the rest of our fleet. Any, and, and just for your own, for your edification, two point one five million dollars is two engines and one ladder over the course of ten years, and, and none of those are new. In terms of, of an addition to the fleet, those are, those are all replacements for what already exists. Questions on that? All right. Bond repayment. The repayment of the bond funds will be amortized over twenty years. This means that projects that occur into the next seven to ten years will be paid by the residents who actually receive the benefits of those improvements. Versus only current residents having to pay the full cost today. Our assumptions in bond repayment are extraordinarily conservative. The growth rate for the fire district is estimated at nearly zero. And the interest rates, uh, that we would pay on bond repayment are estimated at five percent. That's, that's extremely high for, for bond repayment rates today. I believe it's in the neighborhood of two point four. With that, again, we're, we're, we're trying to present the worst-case scenario so that we don't. Overpromise and underdeliver in this, this whole thing. This was put together by Stiefel Investments. They would actually be handling the bond sales. And this information is actually derived from county records in, in the fire district. So the actual, and it's important when we look at this, that we recognize the value for tax purposes is limited property value. That is not the full cash value, nor is it the market value of your home. The actual limited property value home within the fire district is valued at a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, eighty dollars. At ten percent assessment, that's twelve thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars. And if you apply that thirty-three cents to it, that estimated average annual cost is forty-one dollars and sixty-one cents, or three dollars and forty-seven cents per month. Similarly, with commercial property, and excuse me, real quick, they, they've also illustrated this at, at an even number at a hundred thousand dollars, and that's simply so that we can do the math, right? If your, if your home is. Limited property value is two hundred and fifty thousand, you can take that number and, and do the math and come up with what your. Your part of that would be. Commercial property assessed at eighteen percent. The average commercial property in the fire district is valued at three hundred and thirty-one thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars. The estimated annual cost to that commercial property owner is a hundred and ninety-five dollars, thirty-two cents. And the estimated average monthly cost to that same property is sixteen dollars and twenty-eight cents. And again, they've calculated it at an even million-dollar value so that, so that somebody could do the math if it's a. If, if their property is worth more or less than that. And then finally, agricultural and other vacant properties are assessed at fifteen percent. The average agricultural or vacant property in the district is valued at two, twenty thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars. That results in an annual cost of repayment of ten dollars and twenty-four cents, or a monthly cost of eighty-five cents. Any question on that information? All right, in review, Timber Mesa is in sound financial shape, and we can continue to provide current services, uh, without, without much change. The bond was unanimously recommended by a citizens advisory committee. Unanimously approved by the fire board to call for an election and receive sixty-five percent public support in a third-party phone survey. The projects in the bond package will improve firefighter and community safety, provide for faster response times, and meet the training needs of the organization for foreseeable future. Bond repayment will cost the average homeowner in Timber Mesa three dollars and forty-seven cents per month. Oh, too far. And with that, I take any questions that you have.
Any questions, comments? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Um, just, just a couple of comments. Um. And I don't know if people heard the mayor when he first started the. I just wanted to make everybody, the public aware that this is, you guys are Timber Mesa Fire Medical as a fire district. And, and, uh. You ran by your own board, so it's not the council here that runs that. And then all the tax money goes into Navajo County, and then you guys do your draws for that, so. Sholo has nothing, Sholo City Council, Sholo City has nothing to do with all your money or how it's just. Put out or anything else, correct? And, and, and theoretically, the county has nothing to do except for draw the money and then pay your bills whenever you ask for a draw. Is that correct? Yeah, that's all I need to know. No, I just saw, that's all I want the public to know, too. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
You, thank you for this presentation. It's very informative and detailed. In your, uh, estimation for your, if this were to pass and you were to, you know, five, six years have all these buildings built. What was your overhead change in your day-to-day operations? Have you figured, because that would, would not be part of the bond, so how much would that increase your, your overall operation cost?
The, the training facility is the only new facility that's being added, right? We already have staff, we already had overhead, we already have overhead costs associated with the other facilities. And even, even with the training facility, we already have a training division. Um, and in this case, it is in the airport facility, so the city takes, takes, takes care of, of much of the building needs there, and, and that would be absorbed with. Fire district for our, our own needs at the new training facility. I don't have an exact number on what that would be, uh, but we know generally speaking what our, what our, our maintenance costs are throughout the district.
Yes, Councilmember Leach?
Um, one more question for, for me, then I'll be done. I've heard this a few times, so. Um, station, whatever you guys want to call it. To me, it was one, but whatever it is, the one right here. Yeah. So if you relocate, what would you do with that building? Is that something you'd sell and put back into?
That, that would be our intent, i- is to later, uh, once, once that move is complete, to, to surplus that building and, and. And sell it. Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions? Or would, uh, people get more information or questions they may have for more detail?
Thank you for bringing that up. I would encourage people, if they have questions, please get in touch with me, a- at Timber Mesa. You can either reach us through the office number, nine-two-eight, five-three-seven, fifty-one-hundred, or you can email us at the admin line. We'll get back to you. Uh, any questions are greatly appreciated. Uh, the opportunity to answer those questions is, is greatly appreciated. And the other thing I would say in, in closing is just encourage everybody to vote again.
This is on the ballot on, uh, November third.
It is.
Yeah. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jake.
Next item we have is the consent calendar. Is there any particular item that needs to be reviewed individually or discussed? I'll go over those items. We have an acceptance of grant funds, uh, National Library of Medicine Authorization. We have a consideration acceptance of grant funds for Arizona State Library CARES Act. And the CARES Act funding for the White Mountain Coalition Against Homelessness. And consideration of award of a construction contract for the Meadow Fence and the minutes of the September fifteenth meeting. Look for a motion. Have a motion by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Leach. Any other discussion? Call for the vote, although in favor, any opposed? See that pass six to zero. Just want to shout out to, uh, Lisa, our, uh, library director, for the grants that she's been able to obtain and, and. Those things are a great improvement for our library, as she gets monies from CARES Act as well as from different things that are available. So she's always looking, and, and I think our library is a great asset for our community.
Mayor, can I, uh, interject something, too? Um, I just want to thank staff for everything that's been going on down at the Meadow. I hear nothing but compliments about the barn and the access for handicap and the access for people to, um, use that creek. Just one thing, please pick up your trash and make sure the trash is cleaned up, but it's a beautiful sight. And I just want to thank staff for, uh, working diligently to get that thing looking really nice.
Thank you. Next item we have is new business, uh, authorizing a funding from council contingency. For turkeys for Sholo residents. Are you handling that?
I'll do it.
City manager?
Uh, I'll, I'll, um, go over the staff report, and I know Vice Mayor also needs to add to it, but. This year's, uh, twenty-twenty's presented challenges for much of the world and, and many of the Sholo citizens. Our residents have been resilient, understanding, and patient during the last seven months since COVID-nineteen restrictions were enacted, despite the many hardships. For the upcoming holiday s- season, two of Sholo's nonprofit organizations have teamed up and approached the city with an idea to help those in need. Vice Mayor also approached staff along with representatives of White Mountain Meals on Wheels, who operates the Sholo Senior Center. And Sholo Main Street to coordinate a one-time event to purchase and distribute Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving turkeys to Sholo residents in need this holiday season. Those who would rather have a ready-made meal for Thanksgiving can elect to take a meal in lieu of turkey, in lieu of a turkey. If funding is approved by the council, staff would purchase the Thanksgiving items. And Meals on, White Mountain Meals on Wheels and Sholo Main Street and other volunteers will hand out meals and turkeys with the, with city staff to Sholo residents. The turkey, um, giveaway program will take place on Monday, November twenty-third, from eleven to one P M. East of the LDS Downtown Chapel on Eleventh Street. That's downtown. The ready-made meals will be handed out during the same time and date at the Sholo Senior Center at three oh one East McNeil. Staff's requesting, uh, an amount up to fifteen thousand from the council contingency fund. To be allocated to purchase, um, the items for this event. We, we believe it's going to be less than that, but we want to make sure we're able to cover the expenses, and whatever is remaining will remain in the council contingency fund.
Thank you. I want to thank, uh, Vice Mayor for working on this diligently here, and also those people from Meals on Wheels and, and the Senior Center. I'll turn the time here to Vice Mayor to, you know, we have some.
Thank you, Mayor.
To share.
Um, Council, I know that this has been the first time really, you guys just read this, so, and I've been trying to hint that there's something been going on, but. Uh, a couple of months ago, uh, Main Street and, uh, I'm on the Main Street Board and the Meals and Wheels and Senior Board, Senior Center Board. And both of them were looking to do something for the community and didn't really know what we wanted to do. So I just threw up an idea going, you know, with this COVID-nineteen, uh, Thanksgiving, usually Senior Center, Meals and Wheels. Provides a meal for a hundred and fifty people, and they come, sign up, and at certain times they can come and eat there. But since COVID-nineteen and trying to get everybody into a close. Facility, we decided that we wanted to do something different. So what we in, uh, decided to do in, uh, with help from, uh, Meals and Wheels and Main Street. And the mayor and, uh, uh, city manager and staff is to come up with, we're going to serve three hundred meals. At the Meals and Wheels Senior Center on that morning from eleven to one. That is for the people, the seniors that cannot cook. Or don't have the facilities to make food for themselves, we would like to give away at least three hundred meals there, and. They'll be try, driving through and then just picking up the meals and taking them home to eat. Uh, the people that can cook, but has been affected by the COVID-nineteen, by a loss of job or, uh, less wages or just utility bills. Or just stuff that they just cannot do anything with. We are going to set up a semi-trailer at the Downtown Chapel here, and we're going to be handing out turkeys to every family, uh, up to. Hopefully about five hundred turkeys is what we're looking at giving away. So, uh, with that, what we're asking people to do is this is what we as Main Street, Meals and Wheels, Senior Center, City Council. Even fifty kids from the Sholo High School is going to help package this food up and, uh, set it up for them. Um, what we would like is if, once you pick up a meal or you pick up a turkey, drop off a canned donation, and that will go to Meals and Wheels for further meals. Some order down the line, maybe even for Christmas. But this is just something that we. And I felt that hopefully the council would want to give back to the community. And so what I'd like to do right now is introduce the, the Director of Meals and Wheels Senior Center, Steve Mirzey. And then Julia from Main Street, and have them come up and talk a little bit about what they're looking at doing with this, uh, also. Would you please slip up in a?
They're both like, what? Thank you, Julia and Steve. Good, good to have you with us tonight.
Thank you for having us. Um. This was actually an idea that Mike brought to a Sholo Main Street, uh, board meeting, and. We were considering different community service projects that we could do. It's been a challenging year for Sholo Main Street and for everybody, and we were looking more at something we can do to give back. Um, a lot of our other events this year, like everyone else, were tabled, so we wanted to take advantage of the opportunity to. Contribute in some way to the community, and we thought that this was a perfect kind of venue for us.
Thank you. Thank you for your help and support.
Well, as everyone is aware, Meals on Wheels' mission in life is to eliminate hunger, particularly in our senior community. in our senior community. And traditionally, we have provided 150 meals in the Senior Center, but we are quite excited to be able to supply up to 300 meals. And along with the meals, we hope that produces many smiles, being a particularly important holiday for everyone, and we're just tickled to death to be able to work with Main Street and, of course, the city to provide this benefit to the community.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Kukavas?
Is there the capacity for community members to be involved in this program, where they can contribute turkeys or meals or?
You know, and I think, and I'm glad you asked that question, there's so many people, once we started bringing this out, that we really wanted to help, and I would just ask if they would love to help, is please donate to the Meals and Wheels Senior Center, either money, and either do it as a write-off, or food cans, or anything else, or even help out Main Street by helping some of their committees at some of the stuff that they do. But yeah, so they can give to, I'm hoping that a lot of people give.
Is there, do they have the ability to store turkeys if they're donated?
I'm pretty sure Steve could probably answer that question, what, what we could do with the cookies and pies and stuff like that, you know, if there's any of that kind of stuff, he might be able to answer how he can prepare those and work at, it's just so much with food preparation and everything, and so much laws and health, things that we have to do that, you know, Meals and Wheels Senior Center has done us so much that they can really help us out with that.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
The question was, is it, community members wanted to donate a turkey or canned goods, how do they do that, and do they have, do you have the capacity to store it?
Thankfully, due to the new addition that the council so nicely created for us, we do have the capacity to store quite a bit of food. We do look for date codes, of course, because we have to maintain some pretty strict standards, and it all depends upon quantity, but we would certainly welcome any donation that a community member would like to give us. It would be much appreciated, and we try to stretch it as far as we possibly can.
They include sheds, too, I think, so we can put more stuff in.
Yes. Any other questions or comments? Appreciate that. Okay, we look for a motion on this item? Councilwoman Kukavas?
I move to authorize up to 15,000 from the council contingency to purchase Thanksgiving meals and turkeys for the Cholo residents in need.
Have a motion, is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Hatch. Any other discussion? Call for the vote, all those in favor? Any opposed? See that passes? We could have got Councilmember Leach to smoke those, we could storm a little longer, but.
Probably get a little money out of them, too.
Let me make a quick comment on that. I know when we used to cook for the Navajo County Fair, Shamrock would show up with whatever size trailer you wanted, so if this is a community event, you might want to go over there, or I could go over there and talk with them and see if, if we get a lot of donations, like you're saying, for like a week ahead of time, maybe they'll set up a trailer, even in their yard, they leave them running in their yard all the time, so if we go to them as a community event, maybe they'd be willing to set up a, I don't think they have freezer trailers that they would leave running, refrigerator.
We, we went ahead and had, got some bids and everything else on it, and Shamrock and US Foods will, if we buy turkeys from them, will put up a refrigerator trailer that we can just hand, hand the turkeys right out of that, so we don't have to worry about storage, we don't have to worry about anything, we keep them frozen.
A week ahead of time, we could.
What would be great is if people wanted to donate, probably if they would donate canned goods, and, and on that Monday, that they could drop them off here at City Hall or something similar to what we did on the COVID-19 drive, they could bring canned goods here if they want to give, and then those who need a turkey can certainly go and pick up a turkey.
But, you know, and I even brought this up to the Cholo High School principal, and Student Council, FBLA, and National Honor Society, all the kids want to come in and participate in this, too, so that's roughly around 50 kids. So there's a lot of people that are really wanting to come to do something for the community, so it's looking really good. I really appreciate schools stepping up to, so, thank you.
Great, thank you. Next item is item 8B, consideration of ordinance number 2020-05, extending and increasing the corporate limits of the city of Cholo, Navajo County, state of Arizona, by annexing thereto certain territory contiguous, contiguous to the existing city limits of the Cholo. Mr. Kukavas?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. On March 3rd of 2020, the city council was presented with a request submitted by Brad and Shannon Edgington, and Ken and Sharon McFaul to annex a portion of land located in an existing county island, south of Cub Lake Road into the city of Cholo. Following discussion with the council, staff approached the remaining property owners in the area to determine interest for their properties to be annexed. Based on these conversations, the annexation area was expanded to include additional property on the west area of the proposed annexation. No property owners in the southern portion of the proposed annexation were interested, with the exception of the city-owned parcel. The entire area proposed to be annexed is described as AP numbers 212, 03, 019H, 019P, 136, 137A, 137B, and 138. Property is owned by several different property owners. Staff has obtained signatures from a majority of the property owners representing the majority of the assessed valuation. State statute requires the signatures from a minimum of 50% of the property owners and 50% of the assessed valuation of the annexation area. No opposition was received from the remaining two property owners. As required by state statute, a public hearing was held August 4th, 2020. After the public hearing, once the 30-day waiting period expired, signatures were obtained, and the signed annexation petitions were recorded with Navajo County. The next step is for the council to adopt an ordinance approving the annexation. The existing zoning within the county is A General, which is comparable to the city's AR-43 zoning, and CR, which is comparable to the city's C2 zoning. Once these parcels are annexed, they will be zoned AR-43 and C2. Any requested changes would then proceed through the normal zone change procedures. Reading and adoption of ordinance number 2020-05 is scheduled for tonight's meeting, and the ordinance would be effective in 30 days. With that, staff is available for questions.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? At this time, I'll ask the clerk to read this ordinance number 2020, since all council members have a copy.
Thank you, Mayor. City of Cholo ordinance number 2020-05, in ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Cholo, Arizona, extending and increasing the corporate limits of the city of Cholo, Navajo County, state of Arizona, pursuant to the provisions of Title IX, Chapter IV, Article VII, Arizona revised statutes and amendments thereto by annexing thereto certain territory contiguous to the existing city limits of the city of Cholo, Arizona.
Thank you, Rachel. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Leach?
Justin, by any chance, do you have a picture that you can put up on the screen so we can, thank you very much. I know we have it here, but the public can't, still can't, there it is. I just wanted people to see where that's located on, that's Cub Lake Road, correct?
Yeah, so you'll see Cub Lake Road up at the top of the map. This is White Mountain Road cutting down kind of on the side here. Wendy's would be on this corner, the new Circle K is here. So this is back behind kind of the Lowe's commercial development and the Mountain Meadows, Mountains Meadow subdivision.
Thank you.
I look for a motion?
I move.
Councilmember Leach?
I move to adopt ordinance number 2020-05.
Have a motion, is there a second? Seconded by Vice Mayor. Any other discussion? Call for the vote, all those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass six to zero. Thank you. Next item we have is a summary of current events. I'd like the council members of any current events that'd like to discuss. Councilwoman Kukavas?
As everyone knows, I work for Summit Healthcare, and we're encouraging everybody to get your Blue Shot. We are having a number of different drive-by Blue Shot clinics that are free. Bring a canned good if you would like to donate, but if you go onto the Summit Healthcare website, you can find all the different, it'll be in the surrounding communities as well, but encourage you to get your Blue Shot.
Thank you. Any other council members? I don't have anything to address, just remind you of the election is coming up November 3rd. We do have some local school board openings that know who the candidates are. Also, there'll be some Proposition 428, which is Timber Mesa's proposition. Also, there'll be ones that we have 207 and 208 that will affect our areas here, so know those issues and get out and vote. And Rachel, our camera's not at my right hand here to tell us where we can go to vote, but I think, City Manager, I'll turn to you.
I'll just go ahead with my report. Speaking of the election, if you, if you have not registered to vote for the November 3rd election, there's still time to do so. It was scheduled to expire yesterday at midnight, but a federal court extended Arizona's voter registration until Friday, October 23rd. That could, as always, it could be reversed, so go register as soon as you can, if you have not registered so far. There are registration forms available at the City Hall. There's two, I'm trying to remember this off memory, there's two precincts in Cholo, one is at Timber Mesa, and one is at the Cholo Campus, the City Campus Gym, and you can vote at either one of those locations, you have a registered vote. Also, Cholo City Hall has been designated as an early voting center for all of Navajo County voters for the November 3rd election. The voting center will be open next week from Monday, October 12th through Friday, October 16th, and Monday, October 19th through Friday, October 23rd, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and that'll be at the City Hall. Voters will need to present a valid Arizona driver's license, and those who received an early ballot in the mail are also welcome to drop their ballot off at City Hall at that polling place, or drop it in the ballot box at the north end of the South County complex at 550 North 9th Place. For more information, you can get ahold of our clerk's office at 532-4060. So there's a number of ways you can vote, and we just encourage everyone to get out and vote. There's fall playdays for ages 5 to 11, which coincides with next week's fall break. There's a drop-in recreation program from 8:00 a.m. to noon next Monday, October 12th through Thursday, October 15th, at the City Campus Multipurpose Building, located at 620 East McNeil. And if you're interested in that for your kids, that you can call 532-4140 to register. And finally, in public works projects, we continue to have several projects around town, including the Fourth Avenue and Cooley roadway project, East Hall sidewalk and drainage project, and the West Cooley Phase 2 sewer project. Well, so, and it's been mentioned earlier in the meeting about the Meadow, there's, we've completed the, pretty much completed the trail project, they lacked a little bit on the fishing piers, but as was approved earlier in the meeting today, they, they're getting ready to, we'll get ready to start building a nice fence around that Meadow, and it'll really set it off, so it's, it's going to be a real good addition for that Meadow, and it'll look really good.
Thank you. I failed to mention, there's also a fire board positions are open as well on the election, and there may be some others that I've missed, I apologize if I missed something there. We just appreciate our citizens, appreciate what you do in our community. As we continue here through COVID-19, there, it changes almost daily, some of the things that are happening. We're, we're blessed and we're fortunate in our community to be where we're at, and to be in the location that we are in, and being able to still be able to have most of our meetings in person, and we appreciate the opportunity that we have to meet with our citizens. And let me just, we encourage you to be safe, encourage you to physical distance, encourage you to have a mask available if you might need to use it because you cannot physical distance, and wash your hands, you know, some of those good things there. So, thank you again. Just want to put a plug in, again, we'll be having the community fast, we'll be talking about that next meeting that we have here on October 20th. It's going to be exciting again this year of some of the things that we have going on. So our community, and I want to mention tonight, thank you again to the city of Cholo for turning our, our city streets purple tonight. And for you to remember, that's because of a very important thing that we want to try to minimize in our community and eradicate if we can, and that's domestic abuse. And so just remember, if when you drive down the streets in the month of October and you see purple, that you realize that somebody's hurting as a result, and whatever we can do to help, let's be there for them. Thank you. Next item we have is scheduling of meetings. Is there any meetings that we do have next, on the 20th, when we meet? We do have a early meeting at 6:30 here, study session, and then we have a retreat coming up in a couple of weeks, and then we have our county, county mayors and councils association meeting here in 15. Any other meetings need to be brought up?
Sounds like enough.
We have an executive session. I need a motion to move into executive session where we'll discuss the lease of modular building at the Cholo Municipal Airport and the minutes of the August 18th. I have a motion, a second by Councilmember Clark, all those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass six to zero. Thank you for being here tonight, citizens, we appreciate it.